Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It is January 23rd at 6 o'clock and Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
If you bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for your continued blessings on our community. Be with those that have unspoken and spoken prayer needs. Help us make the decisions that keep making our community the place it needs to be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is someone from the Alzheimer's Association here? Yeah. Hey, Mike Dan. This is my buddy, Mike Dan. Mike has worked at Stone River Manor for how long, Mike?
Twenty-eight years.
Mike's been there 28 years. And the cool fact that you don't know about Mike, besides that every single year he leads the fundraising for the Alzheimer's Walk. Mike, how many carrot cakes did you make last year and give to people? You made over 200 carrot cakes last year and gave out to people. And how many did you make this year?
Over eighty.
He's made 80 over this year. And I have been one of the lucky recipients of those carrot cakes. And they are on time. So, Mike, thank you for what you do. So, today, it's our, the city of Murfreesboro's pleasure to be able to recognize it for Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month. The Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, whereas an estimated 6 million people aged 65 and over have Alzheimer's and another 200,000 people under the age of 65 have younger onset Alzheimer's disease. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the fifth leading cause among elderly and the fourth leading cause of death in Rutherford County. Whereas, the city of Murfreesboro recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias through its walk to end Alzheimer's, which is now in its 23rd year. Whereas, these efforts to raise funds and awareness have hereby, have thereby improved the quality of life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers in Murfreesboro. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and urge all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Tonight's a special night because we get to recognize a young individual in Murfreesboro who, you know, I think as a council and as a city, we try to set the example of teaching people to do the right thing and to be leaders. It's easier said than done when you come in an intense situation. And so, I want to ask Logan Moran if he'll come up. Logan? On Riverdale's graduation night, Logan was with his swim team and stood outside of MTSU at Murphy Center. Parents and coaches had just left and they were all gathering together and shots were fired. And as everyone was running away, seeking safety, Logan and some of his friends were gathered behind a wall. When everyone looked up, Logan saw a victim that was on the tennis court. And instead of running the other direction, Logan ran to give first aid to the victim. He had been trained in CPR and first aid as a lifeguard and so he ran to help the victim who was shot. He stayed there. He made a makeshift tourniquet for the victim until first aid had gotten there. Reading through all the things that were associated with this event, not only did he go the direction of harm to be able to help someone who was in need, but as I was reading through and talking to the police, he didn't want to leave. They literally had to tell him, hey, we got this, you need to leave. And so, Sean Wright brought this to our attention about wanting to make sure and recognize Logan, but we wanted to publicly recognize Logan for what he did and more importantly, I think, what he's going to continue to do in this community. So, Logan, we appreciate you on behalf of the city of Murfreesboro. Logan, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you like to recognize your family who's here with you? You come up, come up to the...
No, anything but that.
I have my mom, my stepdad, my sister, my dad.
You have the consent agenda in front of you.
We have two family friends and then my girlfriend, her brother, her mom.
Randolph is going to take a picture. You have 16 items on that agenda. Mr. and Ms. Moran, if y'all want to come up, let's, let's get a picture and we'll make sure and put this on our, our city website. Are there any things that need to be added or pulled on to the, off of the consent agenda?
If there aren't, I'll move for approval. Second?
Motion, second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to approval of the minutes. You have the May 19th through the June 8th meeting. And this is from finance. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
There aren't, and I'll move for approval.
Second?
Motion, second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into land use matters. You have ordinance 22OZ16 correcting the zoning boundary for the Clary Park PUD. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to resolutions. We have resolution 22, or excuse me, that was, that was the tax rate ordinance, just to clarify, that was ordinance 22O12 that we passed on first reading. We'll move to resolution 22R18. This is the city schools budget amendment number 10. Director Duke?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Director Duke, wait, before you go any further, I read in the paper that we're going to get to see you for at least another three years.
Like it or not, here I am.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that.
Ray, I know I've said this several times, but you know, what people in the school system, administrators and leaders went through specifically over the last two years, no one was trained to deal with that and you could not and your team could not have done a better job. So, well deserving for a three-year contract extension.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, good evening. I'm presenting a resolution for your approval that recognizes several budget amendments, all of which were approved by the school board of the 24th of May and June 14th. All but one of these amendments represent new grant revenues or increases to state awards. This includes a $62,309 in new state revenues for high-cost special education expenditures, recognizing $200,000 in the new federal revenue to enhance and support services provided to children experiencing homelessness, recognizing $142,500 in new federal revenue to support the adoption and implementation of new math resources, recognizing $103,000 in new federal revenue to provide educator stipends to attend a state-required week-long literacy training, and recognizing $3,063 in new federal revenue for administrative costs associated with the implementation of the federal pandemic electronic benefits transfer program. The final amendment is to our general fund and reclassifies $27,720 in operating transfers to correct their coding for our federal bookkeeper to meet audit requirements. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Duke?
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to land use matters and you have ordinance 22OZ17. This is on Medical Center Parkway for a rezoning. This is from planning. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is the rezoning of property located at the southwest corner of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. There are two components to this. There is a request for the property directly at the corner that's in the red color on the map before you, to be rezoned from MU and GDO1, so mixed-use and gateway design overlay district, to CH, commercial highway and gateway design overlay district one. The property in blue is proposed to be rezoned from MU and GDO1 to PUD, Planned Unit District and GDO1, for a proposed mixed-use development. The total acreage is 13.7 acres and 11.3 acres of that is in the blue area to be a part of that PUD. The red area totals 2.5 acres. To get you a little bit more oriented on where the subject property is located, the former Peter D's is here that I've circled, which is where McAllister's is located now. There is existing commercial development, including the Krispy Kreme and the Bad Daddy's Burger Bar across Robert Rose Drive to the, to the east. And of course, the avenue is directly to the west. The Everwood at the Avenue apartment complex is located directly to the south and is zoned MU. As you can see, the majority of the property in the area is zoned either MU or CH and it's all located within the gateway design overlay district number one. Mr. Taylor will get up in just a moment and give a presentation regarding the proposed development, the proposed PUD request. And I mentioned that the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on May the 4th and then voted to defer action at that meeting. It was brought back up under old business on May the 18th. And there were some key changes that were made prior to the May 18th meeting. The applicant came back and reduced the number of apartment units and increased the amount of office space. After the applicant made those changes, the Planning Commission then voted to recommend the approval of this request to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And now, I'd invite Mr. Taylor to give you his presentation on the specifics of the proposed development.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Ross Bradley and Mr. John David Blankenship, both of TDK. We're all here tonight to present to you a opportunity for a project to construct TDK's new corporate headquarters and a project we've termed Vintage Mixed Use. The site is just under 14 acres in size, as Mr. Blomley said. It's at the southwest corner of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. Today, the property is mostly open pasture with woods to the southern portion of the property. The site is on mixed-use today, as Mr. Blomley said. And currently, there's a hot point in roughly the middle of the property and the site drains in most every direction from there. We have proposed a mixture of zoning of PUD and commercial highway. The PUD portion would be about 11 and a quarter acres in size and the commercial highway just a hair under two and a half acres in size. We've proposed this to allow TDK to construct a true mixed-use development for their corporate headquarters and at the same time showcasing their trade and present a quality and unique project to our gateway area. We have committed to all underground utilities, as would be expected in the gateway. We've got a dedicated office building, multifamily residential, as well as a multitude of commercial uses at the ground floor of three of those multifamily buildings. And we have previously confirmed that all utility availabilities and capacities are available at this site. Master plan itself, I'll start on the right-hand side. This will be where our office building is. It's a five-story, 60,000 to 65,000 square foot office building located along Robert Rose Drive. The four buildings toward the central and western portion of the site would be the mixed-use and residential portions of the property with the three middle ones encircling our large amenity, which would be a pool, open lawn area in that location. And then, in the upper right-hand corner would be our two and a half acre commercial out parcel. We do not have a definitive user there. Ideally, we would have a restaurant come in and take that space. As you can see from the PUD master plan, we have distributed our parking throughout the site. All of this is convenient to our residents, tenants, employees, and patrons. We have located those parking spaces to the side and rear of all of our buildings so that the buildings themselves are showcased and not the parking lot. Our commercial out parcel will stand alone on its parking requirements. It will not depend on the PUD portion of the development. The proposed parking standards that we've outlined inside the book are for a one-bedroom unit to be 1.1 spaces per bedroom. For the two-bedroom units, 1.1 spaces per bedroom. The office, one space for over 300 square feet. And for that ground floor commercial, one space for over 225 square feet. All of these are in compliance with the zoning ordinance with the exception of the one-bedroom requirement. Typically, that is one and a half spaces per bedroom. We've requested a reduction to 1.1. That's consistent with what we've done on a couple of other projects. And we'll have you, with that, our total parking required based on these standards is 634 spaces and we're providing on space, on site, 641 non-handicapped spaces. So, we exceed that requirement. This required parking, I would reinforce that it is assuming that all the employees for the office building are there, all the patron and employees for the ground floor commercial are there, and all of our residents are there for the residential. That scenario is never going to happen. These uses and timing do not overlap like that. And so, we are, we feel strongly that we are way overparked for the site, but we wanted to be conservative, especially after some guidance from Planning Commission. And so, we are only requesting this one reduction on the one-bedroom. We have created what we feel like is a very strong pedestrian network throughout the site and to our neighboring properties. We have sidewalk connections to Maple Grove Drive, to Medical Center Parkway, to Robert Rose Drive in multiple locations, as well as to Everwood to the south and directly to the avenue to the west. And then, we also have a strong sidewalk internal to the neighborhood to encourage people to get out and walk, whether that's to walk internal to our project, to walk over to some of the businesses that Mr. Blomley mentioned earlier. This site will have great connectivity to the rest of our gateway. In order to encourage that, we've tried to provide very wide sidewalk zones along our northern east-west road. So, along that road, in front of the buildings, we provided for a 15 to 20-foot, what we call sidewalk zone. The sidewalk zone will be made up of planting areas, streetscape, street trees, sidewalks, seating areas. Some of those seating areas will be plazas or maybe outdoor seating for a restaurant in that area. So, a very inviting area. The opposite side will also have sidewalks as well as further street trees and perimeter plantings. This is a ground-level perspective view, just to show you how the architecture, that on-street parking, those sidewalk zones will come together, create an ambiance that makes people want to spend time here, makes them want to come back, make them want to walk within our project. Along with the pedestrian side, we've created a very strong vehicular plan, we feel like. We've got good connectivity directly to the avenue shown here in the purple, over to Maple Grove Drive in the green box, out to Medical Center Parkway in the yellow, and then twice to Robert Rose Drive in the blue. With those connections, we're able to provide some connectivity between Robert Rose and over to the avenue to alleviate some of the signal volumes. So, this would allow people to go from Robert Rose straight to the avenue without having to get on Medical Center Parkway. So, a strong, important interconnection that we've been looking for, for quite some time. These will be all privately maintained and owned, so would not burden the city with those maintenance. Another, another important feature of this is we'll be completing the right turn lane or that additional third lane on the southern portion of Medical Center Parkway, starting in front of McAllister's and run into where it intersects with the right turn lane going toward Robert Rose Drive. Along that same turn lane, we would construct or finish the gateways, streetscape master plan elements. There'd be street trees, decorative lights, as well as sidewalks. And then, we would continue that same, same path, that same pattern down along Robert Rose. All of that would be constructed with our first phase of development, so it's not something we would have, somebody would have to be waiting on. Our first phase will be the office building, shown roughly here in red. That office building's five stories, no more than 75 feet tall. Again, it'd be about 60,000 to 65,000 square feet in size. It'll have a rooftop patio on the north side, outdoor plazas on the ground floor. And then, setbacks are measured 40 feet from Robert Rose Drive, 10 feet from the sides, and 20 feet from the rear. That 40 foot from Robert Rose, that is an exception request. The ordinance would require 50 feet here. We asked for the extra 10 feet to create a better streetscape presence along Robert Rose. We have purposely not had parking in front of this building for that reason. We have all quality materials, pre-cast concrete base, cast stone cladding, aluminum curtain wall, as well as an abundance of windows. Here's some examples of the architecture. This is the view that will face out toward Robert Rose Drive. So, you can see a very strong entry feature, varying roofline, a lot of building planes. This would face toward that future commercial out parcel. Above, you can start to see the glass pulled back from the side that'll create that rooftop plaza or patio. This faces toward Everwood Apartments and this would face internal to the project. So, you can see, we do not have a back door. We have four-sided architecture, which is very consistent with the gateway design overlay And this is a kind of bird's eye perspective from the intersection of Medical Center and Robert Rose, looking at this office building, you get a good idea of really the whole project, but specifically how this building will function and that presence on Robert Rose Drive with this view. The mixed-use buildings, we've termed them A, B, and C, shown here in red. These will be four stories, no more than 60 feet in height. They're having abundance of outdoor seating and plaza areas, especially along that northern boundary where we parallel our east-west street. We have that wide sidewalks, on-street parking along that east-west street, and a large amenities specifically in our courtyard area between B, C, and D. And then, again, we'll have that ground floor commercial in the northern part of A, B, and C, be about 13,000 square feet in size. We'll carry over some of the materials from the office building, but we'll also introduce fiber cement board here since it does have a residential character. And then, the allowable uses, we've got a full list of those inside the book. We have tried to select uses that would be very complimentary. They're service-oriented. We want them to bring a lot of activity, but be cohesive to the users and the owners of the project. So, this is, be looking inside of McAllister's parking lot into this central courtyard. Again, it gives you a good sense of all the architecture and streetscape. This is building A. This is our westernmost building. The lower left-hand corner would be the view that would face in toward McAllister's Deli, while the lower right-hand corner would face toward Avenue or the Belk. Building B, this would be the next eastern building and the lower left-hand corner would face toward Avenue or the Belk. Building B, this would be the next eastern building and the lower left-hand corner would face back toward building A that we just looked at. You can see how that commercial front edge wraps the first two bays in that lower left-hand corner. And then, building C is the next most eastern building. This lower picture, this is a mix of building B and C. This would be what would face north or toward McAllister's and the commercial out parcel. That gives you a good view of how these buildings will work together, all the variation in roofline, the varying building materials, and how that ground floor retail and commercial is set apart with a different architecture than the upper floors. Building D is on the southern portion of the project. We did not include any commercial here, given that it was separated from that east-west road. I think it's getting less viability or no viability. It will maintain the same building materials, the same architectural style, and the same building height as the other three. And this is a kind of bird's-eye perspective from the intersection of Medical Center and Robert Rose, looking at this office building. You get a good idea of really the whole project, but specifically how this building will function and that presence on Robert Rose Drive with this view. The mixed-use buildings, we've termed them A, B, and C, shown here in red. These will be four stories, no more than 60 feet in height. They're having abundance of outdoor seating and plaza areas, especially along that northern boundary where we parallel our east-west street. We have that wide sidewalks, on-street parking along that east-west street, and a large amenities specifically in our courtyard area between B, C, and D. And then again, we'll have that ground floor commercial in the northern part of A, B, and C, be about 13,000 square feet in size. We'll carry over some of the materials from the office building, but we'll also introduce fiber cement board here since it does have a residential character. And then the allowable uses, we've got a full list of those inside the book. We have tried to select uses that would be very complimentary. They're service-oriented. We want them to bring a lot of activity, but be cohesive to the users and the owners of the project. So this is, be looking inside of McAllister's parking lot into this central courtyard. Again, it gives you a good sense of all the architecture and streetscape. This is Building A. This is our westernmost building. The lower left-hand corner will be the view that would face in toward McAllister's Deli, while the lower right-hand corner would face toward Avenue or the Belk. Building B, this would be the next eastern building, and the lower left-hand corner would face back toward Building A that we just looked at. You can see how that commercial front edge wraps the first two bays in that lower left-hand corner. And then Building C is the next most eastern building. That's lower picture. This is a mix of Building B and C. This would be what would face north or toward McAllister's and the commercial out parcel. That gives you a good view of how these buildings will work together, all the variation in roofline, the varying building materials, and how that ground floor retail and commercial is set apart with a different architecture than the upper floors. Building D is on the southern portion of the project. We did not include any commercial here, given that it was separated from that east-west road. I think it's getting less viability or no viability. It will maintain the same building materials, the same architectural style, and the same building height as the other three residential buildings. Commercial out parcel located directly at the intersection of Medical Center and Robert Rose. We don't know that end user, but we, that corner is very important to us. We want to control it. We will control it. We'll carry over and expect the same quality building materials. It will, of course, go through the full GDO review process. We are going to limit this building height to 35 feet. That will give that designer some flexibility in building elements and how they design their building, but it will preserve the view sheds from Medical Center Parkway toward the southern buildings, our mixed use and our office buildings. We based our allowable uses on the commercial highway zoning, but we're going to restrict privately some of the more obnoxious users, uses that we worked with, staff and planning commissioner. They're all listed inside the book. A few of those are listed here, like the gas stations and car washes and liquor stores. So those will be restricted out of our project. We've got amenities scattered throughout the project. We'll start at Building A. These are largely seating areas and plazas. They are amenities meant to encourage people to get out of their houses, out of their offices, gather, socialize, be very communal, and create a, create a community inside of this small project. Our largest amenity will be in the central courtyard between Buildings B, C, and D. This will be a mixture of a, kind of an open lawn area, a pool, as well as a standalone fitness facility, all shown here. These are designed to be very flexible spaces so we can appeal to all of our residents through some kind of event throughout the year. This is a perspective looking into this area. You can see that standalone fitness facility. It's got its own little rooftop plaza area. You see the pool in the background, and then you see the open lawn event space in the foreground here. Some pictures of what the cabanas and pool areas will look like. This open lawn area is a very flexible space. We could turn it into a beer garden for the evening for our residents, open play area, cornhole tournaments, even have an intimate musicians' night, just to name a few of the potential uses that we can program there. The office building will have its own amenities as well. Some of those will be private, some of those will be public. The, probably the favorite private feature is going to be this rooftop patio plaza area shown here on the A. That's on the north side of the building. I think most of us have probably visited the one at Gateway or Vintage Avenue. These offer some tremendous views of our gateway and our battlefield areas, and this will continue that except for on a grander scale. Then we've got some ground floor, ground-level plazas on the south and the west side of the building to really try to activate, encourage people to, again, come out here, take a break, eat lunch, socialize with some water features and plazas here. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor, could you, do you have the unit counts for the multi-use buildings?
There's 232 total.
Or each building?
On each building? Let me see. I don't have those broken down on each building, no, sir. I can get that for you, though.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this resoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the resoning request, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll direct all your comments or questions to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. As an individual, you have three minutes. Anyone wishing, or please state your name and address when you do come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
All right. My name is Walees Martin, and this is my partner Darren Douglas. We're a small business here, Silver Linus Concierge, located here in Murfreesboro. We provide valet service for multifamily use developments. Just wanted to first say that it's an honor and privilege to stand here before this committee today. When my partner called me and told me about speaking on behalf of TDK, I was just thankful for the opportunity, just because I began thinking about, you know, what they meant to us personally as well as professionally. Six years ago, we got our first contract servicing apartment here in Murfreesboro, a 54-unit college apartment. And just learning how to do the day-to-day operations was one thing, but handling the business was a whole nother aspect. And with the help, we just believed that we were doing the right thing, and we would be led by the spirit, and business would eventually come. Little, you know, 18 months passed, and we still had those same 54 units. We got connected with Mr. Bradley, which I would have to say he was God-sent for us. And since that first meeting, just, he began to give us the plans and gave us our real first big opportunity at the Vintage Gateway, or Vintage Avenue. And with that establishment, we got introduced to property management companies that allowed us to grow our brand. And then as new developers came into Murfreesboro, everyone would come see what's the latest TDK project, to see what amenities they had and what vendors they were using, and that got our name out as well. Well, we started to get a few more contracts, but we also saw some rejection, too. And again, we're calling Mr. Bradley like, hey, what should we do as far as contracts? What should we have? What should we take away? Or what did the bid process look like? And he's been such a mentor and helped us out, and he's always been so gracious throughout the whole process. He would say, hey, do this or do that, or I can give you legal guidance, but I would do this or I would do that. And when you've got a man of God that just comes and bless you, you can't do nothing but prosper when you adhere to the advice that they give. So I remember later on, we were growing and needing another office space, and so we went to his property or to his office, and we were looking to see if they had some rental space in their building or if he knew of somewhere we can go. And that's when he told us about the Vintage Gateway project, which we'll be finishing up, and that we should get an office there, and it'd be a good look for our company. I would have to say, my partner could agree that we finally felt like, hey, we're on the map now. We got an office space. We could come in, we can invite clients, we could do interviews, our new hire process, and it's been such a blessing for us. And then as a renter of an office space there, we got to use all the amenities as well. That included mailbox or coded access for storage, big, large packages, or the fitness center, the swimming pools, the cabana. We got to use conference rooms for all large meetings and things of that nature. Hope I'm not saying too much to make up on our rental prices, but seriously, but TDK has been such a help and such a blessing for us, and I know they've done the same for this community as well. And I just want to say, with them being like a local business here, I couldn't think of a better fit and a better company that represents not only Murfreesboro here, but all throughout the southeast. You know, I know you guys do a great job planning and the layout for future development. I know there's certain algorithms and metrics that have to be established to determine the city's layout, but I do understand that things change, and that's why we're here today. And so just like my partner, I remind ourselves all the time that, you know, we like to go with what's in our spirit and what we're hearing in those quiet moments, because I know the words say in a man's eye, we'll, we'll seem like what we're doing is right, but we know that his ways are higher than our ways and that his thoughts are higher than our thoughts, and so that the plans that he have are things that we can far imagine. So now today, I can say, we never imagined being in multiple states or servicing over 10,000 units, but with the help of TDK and the guidance we've received from Mr. Bradley, that has become a reality for us, and so we are in favor of the proposal for TDK's new establishment on Murfreesboro.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 22 OZ 17.
Well, I throw a little curveball. You know, I've already talked to you guys a little bit, and I don't know what the number of us here or whatever, but, you know, since we went through Planning Commission, they made a couple of little changes, and I'll just kind of throw it out there on the table. I'll just leave it at that. You know, there's, to me, there's always some, you know, you gotta look, and we've already, you know, voted on ordinances and sewer allocations and mixed-use ordinance, and we've, you know, as a council, I think stated pretty clearly where we are, but, you know, when you add things like the office building in there and they've added some space to it, I'm certainly willing to go a certain level. I think they also have, we could argue an entitlement for some number of units, which I think the number was 86. So I kind of had thrown out some numbers at the Planning Commission, and I'll just kind of throw out my number right now, which is not just random, but basically, if we, if we doubled what their entitlement was at 86, that'd get us to 172 units, which also puts us really close to where we would be at an R and 16 zoning, which is kind of the in-between on, well, we've already said we're not going to put new units here, and you can have 25 units or 22, whatever the number is, at the gateway. So I can get right with that number. I just can't get right with 232, 272, whatever that number is in those ranges. So, I mean, I'm just kind of laying that out there. That's a new, that's, since they made some updates, so.
You want me to go? You know, it's interesting. We've had a lot of conversation about the economy and the local economy and where that is and the interest rate environment, and I think there have been many cases where sometimes we can take for granted the investment that companies make in our city. And so, you know, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. I'm not any smarter than anyone else, and so I don't know where we are headed, but I do think we're really lucky to have the opportunity that we have in front of us. I do think, to Rick's point, I do understand what he's saying, and I think, for me personally, the conversations we have had about where we want density and where we have infrastructure and where we've planned for density have been, you know, we wanted to attract that downtown, and we want to kind of eliminate the sprawl, and there are lots of pieces, and it's complicated. But I think when you look at this project and you combine the fact that, you know, one of the things we've talked about wanting at the gateway and on Medical Center Parkway is an HQ there, I don't think we have any of those. And I think this is a great opportunity to reward one of our local companies that have invested in Murfreesboro. I understand the strategy with pairing the HQ with the multifamily. I get that. It's probably a good strategy. But I don't think the number of units we've proposed, especially after it was reduced from planning, is going to put us into a place where I'm uncomfortable or it's going to negatively impact the gateway. And so I think it's a great-looking project. I'm very appreciative for the investment that TDK has made in the community, continues to make in the community. I think the HQ is something that we talk a lot about with other companies. I think if we have an opportunity to help create a place for TDK, I'm certainly supportive of that, and I think it's a great-looking project, so.
I said this in planning, too. If the HQ wasn't there, I would have been just an absolute no. The HQ is what got me over the top to get through planning. I would really like to have this decision made when the whole council's in place and not just three or four of us, or four of us. So that's kind of my thoughts.
At five, okay, I'll just make sure.
I think it's an excellent project, and I think it'll be a great enhancement to our city. But if everybody wants everybody here, are we going to?
I've got one question for Mr. Huddleston before we talk about.
Okay.
Mr. Huddleston, can you give us what, I don't know if this is Mr. Griffith, but what's the game plan on Medical Center Parkway from Broad Street to I-24?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. We actually have a contract in hand to undergo the design of Medical Center Parkway, include three lanes in each direction, so it'll be six lanes with some sort of center turn lane as well. So it'll be basically adding an additional through lane in each direction. And if I understand Mr. Taylor's comments as far as the, as far as the work they have planned on Medical Center Parkway, it would dovetail into what our plans are for the future.
So three lanes on each side in the center lane, so basically seven lanes from Broad Street to 24?
Yes, the median would still exist there in front of the, basically between Thompson Lane and I-24, the median would still exist. We would just take out the bumpouts for the right turn lanes through there, and that would be the additional lane. Our plan would be to decrease the median between Thompson and the curve right there at the fountains, if you will, so that would be widened to the inside, and then we would just have a straight six lanes across the bridges there.
Okay. What stage did you say we were in? Did you say we've already?
We've got a contract, yes. We've actually got a contract from a, from a local consultant to start that work. We're just working out the funding part of it now. We're looking at.
Have we talked about the funding? I don't.
No, we haven't. That's exactly right.
This is all brand-new to us?
Yes, yes. It would.
When did that happen? I mean, who moved this up on the list from all the other projects you're talking about?
Yeah, it hasn't moved, it hasn't moved up on the list. What we're planning on is bringing back two things. One, a discussion about the allocation of the MED funds from a transportation standpoint, and then integrating that to the CIP, so, but.
Talking about shifting that money to this project? Is that what you're saying?
We're talking about how it would be funded, so right now, I don't know if it's shifting or Aaron's on our head, yes, maybe it is shifting or something.
I think we specifically said there were four projects we wanted that to go to, but I think that was pretty clear. I'm just, so I think it would be shifting if we move it, but.
But there's other fund, there's other funding sources that we could do, but to move the project along, not just for this project, but we have another project, economic development project, that's coming to council next week that this is beneficial to, so.
I'm going to make a motion, we defer it till the next council meeting where everybody's here, the next council meeting, whatever, where we don't have, where we don't have Kurt and Bill not here. So is everybody going to be here next week?
It looks like it.
All right. We have a motion, a second to defer.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, it's been deferred. All right, we'll move to.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What opposition, if any, did the Planning Commission have regarding this project?
It was 6-1, wasn't it? Yeah, I mean, the only things that we talked about were parking, because it's, it was, I think, under parks by some number, and there was an equation. There was some layout discussion about how the buildings were laid out as far as moving the buildings. You know, I talked about those numbers that I told you guys as far as the overall numbers of apartments that are going to be built in the next 12 to 18 months already, which is 1,700 or something like that, I mentioned to you guys separately, so I didn't want to bring it all back up tonight, but, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to say, Mr. Griffith, thank you for the information. You know, if we could go back 20 years and fix mistakes, I think that were, were made, and this is before a lot of us, Medical Center Parkway would be one that we would say a two-lane road with no shoulder is something we've talked about. That's no surprise on that. So I think we're going to have to look at, and it's on the list of road projects that we've talked about, hotspots that we did on Robert Rose that y'all did at Regions Bank. So whether this project is approved or not, it doesn't take much to drive down Medical Center Parkway and see Medical Center Parkway needs some help. That's going to have to, I think, be an overall discussion whether the economic development project is, is passed or this project's passed. That's going to, that's, in my opinion, that's going to be something we're going to have to talk about. All right, we'll move to amending the zoning ordinance. This is item 22. Roman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is the.
Before you tonight is the, uh, proposed zoning ordinance amendment for alcoholic beverage manufacturing purposes. Over at least the last decade, probably the better half of the, better part of the twenty-first century, microbreweries and small-batch production have had tremendous growth in their popularity and their economic impact. They've, uh, brought along opportunities for increased tourism, where microbreweries and, uh, small-batch distilleries and small wineries are becoming more of a destination point, not strictly just a manufacturing hub. It's also led to increased opportunities for small business and entrepreneurship. While the industry has grown and modernized, the current zoning regime unfortunately has not, and has become antiquated. So, staff has worked with, uh, local stakeholders to try to fashion a modern approach to microbrewery and alcoholic beverage manufacturing regulation in the city. Um, with our current zoning, we have two listed uses. One is a general alcoholic beverage manufacturer, which is just a catch-all for any type of manufacturing. It is listed as a strictly industrial use, is, uh, only allowed in the heavy and general industrial zones. Uh, there are some regulations for it at N note twenty that deal with some of the acceptable accessory uses, lay out some setbacks, things of that nature. And they have their own, uh, parking calculation to go along with that. There's also a listed use for brewery, although it's not defined in the ordinance, and it has no associated regulations, although planning has typically treated it, uh, under the banner of alcoholic beverage manufacturer, so that brewery has also been subject to the N note twenty regulations. As I said, without any significant updates, uh, in, in quite a while, the current zoning regime has become antiquated. Uh, it doesn't reflect the growing interest in locally brewed beverages. It also doesn't reflect the advancements in industry and technology that have allowed , uh, smaller batches of consistently brewed beer to be produced, uh, in smaller footprints. And like I said earlier, it also doesn't recognize that microbreweries have grown to be destinations in their own right. Um, the current zoning is also restrictive, uh, because all types of manufacturing are currently, um, only allowed in the heavy and industrial zones. Um, and as, um, the technology and the industry have changed, um, some of these smaller uses are, are no longer appropriate for strictly, uh, industrial areas. So, the process that we used to come up with tonight's proposal was really one that was, uh, not necessarily centered on the stakeholders, but they were very much involved in the process. We had several interest meetings with, uh, local brewers in the area, people who were interested in the process, uh, it was very iterative. We had, uh, several different drafts that went out with this. Uh, we would take it to the stakeholders, we would talk with them, had very good, um, very good discussions, uh, that went, that went both directions, and each time we, we met, we felt like we were closer and closer to the mark until we got to what we bring you tonight. Some of the other research that, uh, planning and legal staff undertook was to look at other cities in Tennessee to see what they were doing. Uh, we looked specifically at Asheville, North Carolina, uh, we know they have, uh, a growing microbrewery industry themselves. Uh, we also looked at other planning resources to try to get the terminology right and make sure that we're, you know, we're being somewhat consistent with what other planning, um, departments are doing, and we looked at other general forms of legal research. So, an overview of the amendments that we have, we want to separate out the uses into their specific categories and not just have the one catch-all definition. So, we wanna break those out into breweries, distilleries, and wineries. To the extent that we still need a use that is gonna be a catch-all, we've kinda designated that as the distilleries, uh, which you can see in the definitions in the ordinance. Within those different uses, we have different output-based categories, um, artisan batches, microbreweries, and full-scale industrial. One aside here, if you look in the ordinance, you'll also see that we're wanting to implement a general artisan use definition. Uh, this first got started, I think, back in the fall when we, uh, did some updates to the city core overlay, um, and we first introduced the idea of an artisan use in there, which would be something that would been, generally be industrial in nature, but is on such a small scale and is done either by skilled craftspeople or with small machinery, uh, that it would be more appropriate in a commercial setting and not strictly in an industrial zone. So, this is really a, a continuation of that and, and an evolution of that use inside our zoning ordinance. Uh, we've also, uh, set aside a separate use for brew pubs, which are really restaurants first that brew their own beer in-house. Um, I know if you've gone a lot of different places, especially in Tennessee or North Carolina, you, you're starting to see more of these restaurants that, that have their own in-house beer. So, to start with breweries, like I said, uh, the industrial, we wanna keep that, uh, in the industrial zones, and we've set the output on that at being greater, uh, than twelve-hundred-and-fifty barrels a month. This is close to what Asheville set for their, um, for their breweries and microbreweries. Industrials would still be regulated under N note twenty that has some revisions to it in the draft ordinance. Um, microbreweries, like I said, would be outputs up to, uh, twelve-hundred-and-fifty barrels. The significant thing that you see here is that microbreweries, in addition to being allowed in all of the industrial zones, are now gonna be, um, allowed in commercial highway and in the central business district. Uh, we've written a new set of regulations for those, uh, at N note twenty-nine. Uh, artisan uses will also be regulated by N note twenty-nine. Um, we've limited their output to up to six-hundred barrels, and in keeping with that general artisan use, uh, definition, uh, limiting them to a three-thousand-square-foot max operating size. Um, in addition to the zones that microbreweries are allowed in, artisans would also be allowed in commercial fringe and commercial local districts. Uh, and just to give you a bit of a sense of, of where we're looking at for scale on these, right now there are two breweries in Murfreesboro, uh, you got Mayday and Cedar Glade Brewers. So, if, if you're looking at scale there, we consider anything Mayday and above is going to be industrial in nature and remain in the industrial zones. Uh, on the other end of that spectrum, you have Cedar Glade Brews, which has their entire brewing facility located within, I think it's a little over seventeen-hundred square feet. So, their output would make them a microbrewery under the proposed ordinance, but their footprint really straddles the line between artisan and micro. So, those kinda give you two benchmarks as far as what we have in town now, where, where uses would fall either above or below those. For distilleries, um, like I said, this is sort of our catch-all that would include anything other than beer or wine or mead, so it would include all distilled products and any mixed products as well. We've set, uh, gallonage, uh, benchmarks for these as opposed to barrelage, uh, which we've limited barrelage to, to the beer categories. Uh, so anything greater than fifty-five-hundred gallons a month would be industrial, anything less than that and fitting within the three-thousand-square-feet would be artisan. Again, industrial, uh, outputs are gonna be strictly limited to the industrial areas. Uh, artisans, uh, for distilleries could also go in commercial highway or the CBD. Wineries, uh, we want to include both wine and mead. Uh, we've, we've heard that there is growing interest, both nationwide and in the, and in the state, uh, for mead production and mead consumption. Um, so we, we wanna stay ahead of that, that curve. Um, again, we've set the same industrial and artisan, uh, output benchmarks as we did for distilleries, uh, at that fifty-five-hundred gallon mark. Um, and again, the same as with distilleries, um, artisans can go in commercial highway and the CBD, whereas industrial is limited to the current industrial zones. And brew pubs, like I said before, it's a restaurant first that brews beer second. Um, as we were going through the, the discussion process with these, figuring out how we wanted to set that apart, um, you know, we, we realized there is a spectrum as far as the accessory uses that might go along with brew pubs and microbreweries. Uh, we realized that both of those will, at some point, probably have a, a blend of beer manufacturing and food service or restaurant uses, but we, we wanted to specifically call out brew pubs as something that's going to look and have the character of a restaurant so that it might fit in more locations and not stand out, uh, as a brewery first. And to that end, we, uh, are proposing to allow them in most of the places that restaurants currently go, which is all industrial, all commercial, plus mixed-use districts, uh, and, and inside the gateway. Output for brew pubs would be limited to four-hundred-and-twenty-five barrels a month, so it'd be the smallest output, uh, of any of the uses. Uh, and, uh, brewing use, uh, could be a maximum of thirty-five percent of the total gross floor area. Uh, they also have their separate regulations, uh, in note thirty, uh, they have certain additional permitted use with, uses with them. Um, and after talking, um, with some of the stakeholders, um, we felt that a ten percent limit on self-distribution would be appropriate for those, 'cause like I said, we, we want these to be restaurants first, so we don't want big trucks coming in and out, you know, looking like they're doing deliveries. But with self-distribution in, uh, unmarked vehicles, uh, they, we feel like that could blend in better with some of the surrounding areas. Uh, with parking calculations, uh, the industrial would essentially stay the same as what they have now, uh, one-point-five or two employees under a large shift, plus any additional accessory uses that you have would also factor in the net. Um, but we've also come up with their, uh, one space for every three outdoor seats. Again, that's just a recognition that for breweries of any size, if they're going to have a tasting room or food service area with them, uh, outdoor seating is becoming, uh, a, a much bigger trend in these areas. Uh, for micro and artisan, uh, we've set out a different calculation, just a, a uniform, five spaces, plus one space for every two indoor seats, and one space for every three outdoor seats. Um, and the reason we've tried to simplify that there is to recognize that micro and artisan uses are generally going to have a different form of clientele, they're probably gonna be in a smaller overall square-foot space than an industrial manufacturer, so we're trying to give a little bit, I don't wanna say smaller of a calculation, but a little bit simpler of a calculation when they're coming in with their site plan reviews. And for brew pubs, they would simply follow whatever the restaurant parking calculation is. Couple of notes on compliance, uh, one of the things that we had, a question that we had come up with our stakeholders was the naming and classifications. They're for the zoning purposes only, um, they're not exclusive, they're not marketing terms, um, we, you know, we're not trying to set industry standards here, um, because some of our classifications, like I said, you know, they, they don't necessarily follow other cities in Tennessee, they don't necessarily follow what the self-distribution limits are, uh, under state law, um, but we, we felt like that the outputs, uh, and the classifications that we had were just good markers for where, where the appropriate areas in the city would be for these. Any sort of alcoholic beverage manufacturing that comes in, be it brewery, distillery, or winery, would still have to comply with other areas of the city code, uh, they have to comply with all elements of state and federal law, and they would have to, uh, obtain appropriate licenses and permits. So, in conclusion, the, um, proposed amendments recognize that, uh, like I said, especially brewing, but other forms of small-batch alcohol production have, have advanced in recent years. They are much more, um, tourist-based now, they are destinations in their own right that have many different uses that go along with them, uh, like I said, be it food service, retail merchandise, event spaces, um, and all these things just sort of come under one roof now. So, we feel like the proposal that we have can help increase the visibility of microbrewery tourism, increase the visibility of Murfreesboro to this growing industry, um, and better make use of the available zoned areas while also protecting, uh, the surrounding zones and uses, like I said, especially with, with brew pubs, wanting them not to stick out among other commercial areas. So, with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Shankins? All right, we need to hold a public hearing for this ordinance amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll now consider on first reading ordinance twenty-two oh thirteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Shankins, thank you so much for your hard work on this, I know y'all have been working on this for quite some time, so thank you. All right, we'll move to ordinance twenty-two oh fourteen, the plan of services annexation and zoning for property along Veterans Parkway, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Subject property is located along the west side of Veterans Parkway. If you bear with me just a moment, and I'll scroll through some items to get there. Here we go. It's located along the west side of Veterans Parkway, just, uh, a few parcels north of Franklin Road. It's directly north of property that you considered for annexation and zoning last year, um, for the Villas at Veterans PRD. This property is, um, seven-point-three acres, and it's currently developed with one single-family home. There is a row of, of, uh, large estate lots along that side of, of Veterans Parkway. The owner of the property, Mr. Rowlett, has requested that the property be annexed into the city limits, and there's a companion zoning request that will go along, which I will, um, provide more information about for the next public hearing. Uh, the plan of services is included in your agenda materials, it shows that we will, uh, easily be able to, um, provide services to this property upon annexation. As I mentioned, there's just one single-family home, so even if development did not occur on the property, uh, its impact to city services would be, would be very minimal. But, uh, considering its proximity to the existing city limits, services will be, be able to be provided to it. Um, and sewer is located to the south, and the developer will need to, uh, acquire a sewer easement from the property owner to the south in order to be able to, to serve the subject property with sanitary sewer. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the, uh, annexation petition and plan of services on May the fourth, and voted to recommend its approval at that time. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing on the annexation and, and the plan of services.
I think we need a little bit of discussion, but let's do it after the planned, uh, public hearing. All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing, and the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services is just like Mr. Blomley said, it's if we can annex it and if the services are there to annex it. We hold the public hearing, if that public hearing passes and the zoning fails, then the annexation is no longer valid. So, this, uh, this public hearing is for the plan of services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on first reading resolution twenty-two RPS fourteen, and this is for approval of a plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have, uh, resolution twenty-two RA fourteen for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
I was, by the way, I looked at the map wrong.
Okay.
It's a different item.
Okay. All right, um, we'll now move to, uh, the, the zoning request for fourteen-point-one-four, or, excuse me, fourteen-point-four acres.
Thank you, Mayor. This includes the property that we just discussed for annexation, which is in the orange and red colors on the map before you, as well as the, uh, PRD that's in the turquoise color on the map before you as well. So, the applicant is requesting that the front portion of the property that was just, uh, approved for annexation to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation, uh, that would be somewhat of a commercial out parcel fronting along Veterans Parkway, and the request for the PRD is for the expansion of the Villas at Veterans Planned Residential Development. The Villas at Veterans Planned Residential Development that was approved, um, back in twenty-twenty-one was for, um, a townhome development. And, uh, I see Ms. Rush sitting back there, she's great at putting tables in her staff comments, I always compliment her on those, and in her staff comments, it goes over the changes between the two. So, the existing planned development is for seven-point-three-one acres, and this would add five-point-seven acres to the development. Um, the existing PRD includes forty-nine townhomes, single-family attached dwelling units, and the proposed amendment to the PRD, including the area that they are adding, proposing to add to the PRD, would include seven additional townhome units for a total of fifty-six single-family attached homes, and then twenty-eight single-family... attached homes, and then 28 single-family detached homes that would be developed as part of a horizontal property regime, à la Tuscany on Thompson Lane, where each of the units are sold individually, but all of the area outside the units is common area. Mr. Taylor will give a more detailed presentation on the PRD in just a moment. The surrounding area, as I mentioned, there are some estate residential lots on the west side of Veterans Parkway. To the west of the subject property is a large undeveloped agricultural area. Across Veterans Parkway is the Kroger, the relatively new Kroger that's at the other corner of Veterans and Franklin, and a few other commercial buildings such as a vet's office and a dental office to the north of the Kroger. The existing future land use map that was adopted in 2017 shows the entire property recommended for a general commercial land use character. What we've tried to do with our proposed future land use map that is before the Planning Commission presently, is to kind of, if you will, right-size that general commercial land use character to the frontage of Veterans Parkway, knowing that very deep commercial parcels are a little bit harder to develop these days than they used to be. So what we've done is we're proposing in the proposed future land use map that the rear portion off the frontage of Veterans Parkway, we're recommending for AUR, which is auto-urban residential. And the proposed townhome and single-family detached development fits within that proposed AUR land use character. That being said, I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern to give a presentation on the proposed development. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on May the 4th and recommended its approval. I will mention that there are some updates to the elevations that the applicant, that the applicant is still awaiting from his architect. He is fully committed to providing those, and so what we would recommend as staff, if the Planning Commission, or excuse me, if the city council wishes to move forward with this on first reading, we would hold second reading until such time as he provides the updated elevations, which, as I mentioned, he's in agreement with all of the things that the planning staff and the Planning Commission recommended. He is just having a hard time getting those elevations. I think both Mr. Taylor, Mr. Harney, and the planning staff all expected to have those prior to tonight, so we regret that those are not included. But as I mentioned, if the city council decides to move forward, we would just hold second reading until such time as the pattern book has been updated.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Justin Harney of Harney Homes, and Mr. John Harney of the Parks Group with me as well, to present to you their request for the PRD amendment to the Villas at Veterans. Property, as Mr. Blomley said, is in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway. We are adding approximately 7.3 acres to this project. The additional land has an existing house, some other outbuildings, some greenhouses, all of which will be demolished with this project. Rest of the property is mostly open pasture land with some row crop. The additional land that we're adding to the project is currently in the county, zoned RM. This is looking onto the site from Veterans Parkway, onto the site from Highway 96. This is to the east side of Veterans Parkway, same thing here. So the existing plan, as Mr. Blomley said, was PRD zoning and commercial highway zoning. The PRD plan had 49 townhomes for a density of just under 6.9 units to the acre, had all underground utilities, about three and three-quarters acres of open space, and then about a 1.8 acre commercial zoning along Veterans Parkway. The new plan increases the commercial highway zoning to about 3.4 acres, increases open space to about five acres, continues to have all underground utilities, and then adds residential units to bring our total unit count up to 84. That is a mixture of detached and a few extra townhomes, and so our density decreases to just under six and a half units to the acre with this plan. All of these will be sold through HPR, just as before, so a horizontal property regime. All members of, all owners here will have to be members of the HOA. That HOA will be managed by a third-party association, all will pay dues, and the HOA will take care of all maintenance on the exterior of the site. All of our streets will be public, all streets will have sidewalks on both sides, be a very walkable community with those sidewalks and the small nature of the project. And they will have buffers along all sides, just as we did before. Townhomes, the architecture remains unchanged from the previous approval. It's all brick, stone, fiber cement, they'll all be two stories in a mix of one- and two-car garages. There's an example of those townhomes. The single-family detached is new to the book, new to the program. We'll keep the same brick, stone, fiber, cement, they'll all be two-story homes, all have two-car garages, and a minimum of 24-inch brick or stone water table on all four sides. The elevations, we have been working with staff, as Mr. Blomley said, they have changed, but they, we understand they still need some more work, and we're very amenable to continuing that progress with staff prior to second reading. Amenities, we'll have an entrance sign at both of our entrances, just like before. We'll continue to have the horse rail fence along Highway 96. We will have a pavilion in the northern portion of the project, and then a playground toward the central part, and those will be connected by unstructured open play area, so somebody can have a picnic, we'll play wiffle ball, flag football. We'll also have the mandatory dog park that has been located away from homes. And then access, we will continue to have one primary access point on the Veterans Parkway, shown here in red, and then one primary access point onto Highway 96, shown here in yellow. And then, again, all of our streets will be public. We have added an additional stub street to the west with this project, and then additional stub street to the north with this amendment. And then buffering, we'll have type C buffers along the north and west sides of the project, shown here in yellow. We'll have type A buffers along the east side, and then the future commercial parcels will construct their own type C with their site plan, shown here in pink and blue. And then one additional change we made to the pattern book since Planning Commission was we added the commitment to not sell to a corporation that's strictly a rental community. I think that's something we've been doing lately, so we've got that language in the book as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Mr. Blomley, or not Mr. Blomley, Mr. Taylor. I'm having trouble understanding, what the detached homes, what's the lot size on those?
So they're all HPR, so everything outside will be common space. So it's very similar to the Tuscany project that we did up off Thompson Lane. So all the yards will be mowed, maintained, all at one time.
But one of the reasons we did that on Tuscany was the product that they put on Tuscany. I mean, I don't remember that, that was years ago. But we can go through the public hearing. Because these lots are what, 2,000, 3,000 square feet?
These, so I think this house is 40-foot wide, and so it would be roughly a 50-foot wide lot if we were to make those lots.
Okay, all right. Need to hold a public hearing on the zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Excuse me, this is, this re-zoning, PRD amendment, apologize. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 22014. Have we had a lot of these HPRs come through with, I guess I'm asking planning, have we had a lot of the HPRs come through that are not townhomes?
We're seeing that number grow. I think Tuscany was the first one, Blackman Village on, off Manson Pike. There are several others that are escaping me, but we're seeing more and more of the detached product coming through as an HPR.
Yeah, we got one more coming through over on Haynes, coming up too, with the same, you know, eight lots on an acre or whatever kind of deal. But I'm a little torn on whether or not to defer this until we get the architect drawing. Just, it was a really sticking point at the Planning Commission. I mean, it was, I think, pretty well unanimous that it needed to be worked on, and I'm struggling a little bit with this whole getting it to second reading, and really what the delay really has to be.
I'm not trying to, like, I know the product that the applicant builds, as a matter of fact, I was in reserve driving through with a gentleman the other day, and there was some trash, and I called planning, and the applicant immediately took care of this. So this is not, the applicant does a great job, but going to an HPR for single-family housing, we did that the first time with Tuscany, and the reason we did that was because Tuscany was going to be age-targeted pool, I mean, extremely nice elevations. I'm, this is just my opinion, but what we're seeing on the side and rear elevations...
We completely agree, and that's something that we have been working with the applicant on.
But my question is, but why would that even make it to us for first reading when, I mean, I don't, I don't think you vote on something just to send it to first reading or second reading when you got something that's this big. I'm not beating the planning staff up, but, I mean, that's putting the cart before the horse, in my opinion, because that is a huge issue. What we're seeing on the rear elevation and the side elevation, we haven't approved anything like that in 15 years.
We agree, and we have been working with the applicant for several months on this, waiting for revised elevations. We put, we put hard deadlines on him getting those elevations to us. He did not meet the deadline to get it into us. We have been, we have been trying our hardest to get those in.
I appreciate the hard work, y'all. That just puts us in a really tough spot to vote on something, giving an approval contingent upon those coming in. I'm a no vote on doing that, and been consistent doing that.
I agree, we're trying to find a, trying to find a solution, knowing that it had already been advertised. It put us as planning staff in a tough position as well, because we asked for it by a date certain, and we did not get it.
I may have missed it, I just take blame for it on my own, that I didn't even know it was HPR, the Planning Commission. I don't know that we really talked about that much. You know, we certainly, I don't think, I know we didn't talk about it much, but it may have been said, I just didn't catch it. So apologize for that, but I mean, in my opinion, I guess with all things being said, I'd assume put this off till we get the, till we get the information that we need. I'll give some time to think through the HPR stuff, too, and I don't want to step out with this number of people here, but we, I'm fine with it. All right, I'll make a motion, we defer it.
Motion to defer. So we have a second.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, you have the sewer allocation variance for Memorial Boulevard for Adams Place. Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Sure. So our sewer allocation ordinance, variance, the sewer allocation ordinance tonight is for property, and I'll show you a concept plan that we've received. This is very preliminary, because we have not received an actual zoning application on this, but in order to move forward with their zoning application, they want to bring the sewer variance to you to know that, whether or not they will have the sewer entitlement to then move forward with the zoning entitlement. So Adams Place is looking to do an expansion for three buildings with senior living units. You can see those three buildings, the front here along Memorial Boulevard, and there's Haynes Haven Lane. Each of those three buildings would have 15 units in them, and then there would be eight townhouse-style units along Haynes Haven Drive. The property directly along Haynes Haven Drive is currently zoned RS15, and a portion of this is a part of the PUD, so it would be a PUD amendment, and it would be rezoning the property along Haynes Haven Drive to RS15. But as I mentioned, they want to bring the sewer allocation variance to you to know if they will have the ability to move forward with their rezoning request. The existing Adams Place development already exceeds the maximum allowance of the sewer allocation ordinance. Sewer allocation ordinance for the Adams Place property would allow 90 single-family unit equivalents, according to the Water Resources Department and their analysis of their current consumption. Adams Place is currently using 136 single-family equivalent units, single-family unit equivalents on the property, and they're requesting an additional 53 dwelling units on the property, which brings their total single-family unit equivalent for the property to 189, which exceeds the maximum number of single-family unit equivalents by 99. This would essentially slightly more than double the amount of single-family unit equivalents allowed on the property. Of course, what they have existing is grandfathered in, because it was all in existence before the sewer allocation ordinance was passed. But if this is approved, they would go from what's allowed now, which is the four single-family unit equivalents per acre, to 8.4 single-family unit equivalents per acre. So the Water Resources Department has reviewed and has determined that there is capacity to handle the additional sewer allocation, and planning staff views the advantages of the creation of the additional senior housing units to be of greater benefit than their requested sewer capacity. Be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Are the townhomes also senior living?
Yes, I believe, I believe it's all senior living. Looking to see if there's anybody from Adams Place, or, yes. We do have a representative from Adams Place. Remind me of your name again.
Andy Clark.
Andy Clark, I knew that, I was in a meeting with him the other day. Mr. Clark, be happy to answer any questions about their proposed expansion.
Do you happen to know whether or not there was any kind of master plan for the piece of property? I mean, whether or not these were discussed, any expansion was discussed years ago?
I think others on our staff have researched that, I have not researched that.
Okay.
So I'm not prepared to answer that.
Any more questions? I mean, this is, to me, this is the kind of stuff that I would go above and beyond our sewer allocation for, so I'm going to move for approval.
I agree, second.
Motion second, any discussion? Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Appreciate y'all's hard work.
Thank you. I've got one more, I'm still up here.
Are you the land exchange next?
No, I believe the Planning Commission recommendation.
Oh, excuse me. We were just going to skip public hearings.
Fine with me.
Yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
Planning Commission recommendations to schedule a public hearing, sorry, Mr. Blomley.
Oh, that's okay, I'm really wanting to get home so I can see Jabari Smith drafted first in the NBA draft. You know, he went to a little school called Auburn University.
You gotta be proud of something.
We do have five public hearings to schedule tonight. Item A, which is a zoning ordinance amendment, we would recommend to add to the existing public hearings that we have scheduled for July the 21st. And items B through E, we would recommend for August the 18th.
Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Blomley's recommendations?
So moved.
Second. Double, double motion. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Blomley, you're waiting for me to give you a comeback, but I'm just not going to do it.
Well, because there's nothing to come back.
I was going to say that now that you've opened that up, that most of y'all will know that Mr. Blomley only has five Planning Commission recommendations typically, because Auburn fans just can't count higher than five.
You got me there.
All right. Land exchange with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation. Mr. Tendell.
Right, we got counsel, this is an agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric for exchange of property that the city now owns north of I-840 on Veterans Parkway, about 116 acres with about 140 acres to the, one mile to the south that is owned... is owned by, uh, Middle Tennessee. The city, the currently owned city, uh, land will be, continue to be used for, uh, economic development consistent with what we have, uh, been using it for, or, um, advertising it for, for, for a while now, but we'll have the assistance of Middle Tennessee Electric, who has, um, a strong economic arm, along with TVA, who does, has a very strong presence in economic development, and, uh, the Middle Tennessee Industrial Development Board, which also is involved in economic development, so that it will assist in that, uh, that parcel being placed into, um, uh, its best, best use. Uh, the land to the south, which is more internal into the city, uh, is, uh, a great parcel for, uh, development of a park and other public amenities. It's closer, um, to neighborhoods, which is a great benefit to them than it would be in a commercial development, and, um, it has some other advantages that makes it, uh, good for municipal uses. So, um, that being the case, about, uh, about a year ago, I think, maybe, somewhere around in there, we just, we began discussing with Middle Tennessee the chance to, uh, eh, exchange, uh, the two parcels. They agree, we've come to an agreement, um, and, uh, that's before you and, uh, was sent to you for your consideration. I think there's some minor amendments to that that Adam can address.
Sure, thank you. Uh, there are two minor technical changes to the agreement that's before you. They're, they're not material to the agreement, but just so you know exactly what you're voting on, and we'd ask that any vote incorporate these changes. The first is that in section 3A, we, we real, we had set the closing date as December 31st. We just, we, it dawned on us that that is a Saturday, so the closing date would be changed to December 30th. And then in section seven, there is a term, defined term that's called the outclose, outside closing date, which would be if a particular condition of the closing is not met. In this case, the particular condition is that if the rezoning of the property is not completed by December 30th, that the, the closing period would automatically extend to February 28th, and there would not have to be any amendment to the agreement. So it's just the changes to those two dates, um, and ask that, uh, any vote or any approval incorporate those changes.
I got a couple of questions. It was December of this, of this last year when we talked about this. It hadn't been quite a year, but it feels like a year.
It does feel like.
I, I, I'm interested in what the timeline is. We allocated 3 million in our last capital improvement plan, then we allocated 5 million in the MED funding, so roughly 8 million. I'm interested what the timing is for West Park once we close on the property and then would also want to hear from either Mr. Williams or Ms. Jackson on what preliminary steps would be taken after that and what you're thinking on that, on that park, on that property. So what, what's the timeline?
Yeah, from a design standpoint, obviously, we want to have the land pretty close in hand before we, we start spending a lot of money on that, on, um, preliminary design on a park site. So, um, once we get through the contingencies that are in the contract, I think we could then start, start hiring architect and plan. Planning in the timeframe and, and Mr. Williams, uh, can probably add some to this, depends on the types of elements that we want in there. Um, you know, an open space is a lot easier to plan than, um, if we are planning on buildings and things like that, so. But I think we can, we can do it in a very timely fashion. We can have a park, uh, certainly designed if we can meet all the contingencies in a timely manner, uh, within a few months and then, uh, start to go into, to, um, to development. This area here, I think, can be planned and developed a lot quicker than, uh, than the other parcel could have.
Mayor, the simple answer is we're gonna start working with other, you know, city services and start with the, the Development Services Division to see what might go here and then use the funding that we do have to be able to reach out and hire a, a designer for that area. So the simple answers, we just don't know yet. We do know that we want pavilions, we want trails, some of the basic things that we want on this site that we think could benefit the community around.
But not ball fields?
We don't have plan for ball field right now.
The only comment I want to make, if this property were available in 2016, we would have bought this property instead of the property that, that we got on the interstate and it wasn't available. So the topo's better, infrastructure's better, it's closer to communities where communities can actually access and walk to those as opposed to having to walk or try to bike across the interstate. It's, it's just a better location. So I, I think, I think it's, it's a win-win for everyone.
We agree with that too.
Yep. I, I don't, I don't want to go, I just want to kind of make sure before I make a motion that if we want to have some discussion on it, just because I don't, again, with us being a little limited. Good. All right, I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Excuse me.
Aye. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, uh, you have item 27, Town Creek Phase II Property Acquisition.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. We have the acquisition of properties for Face Creek, or Town Creek Phase II. Before the meeting today, I placed a corrected copy of the council communication on your, on your, uh, at your stations and, uh, basically there was a, a transcription error in the physical impact part of that, which I'll cover in just a couple of minutes, not a major error, but it was incorrect on the previous version. So we do have the acquisition of, uh, seven parcels and a, a portion of eighth parcel. On the screen, I have a map, uh, for you to show you the location of those. As you'll recall, we, um, we had Town Creek Phase II proposed in the projects for the American Recovery Plan Act funding that the city received as a clean water initiative project. That particular, uh, source of funding requires obligation by the, the end of 2024 and construction or use of those funds by the end of 2026, so we are, uh, working, uh, at a, at a, uh, higher, higher pace than normal. Because it involved federal funding, our, uh, property acquisition has to follow the federal process, so we've, um, hired appraisers, uh, to help us with that. There is a summary table, uh, in the document, uh, showing those appraisals, and so we ask your approval today, um, to, uh, to make those offers, uh, close on consensual purchases and if necessary condemn the properties to allow us to move forward in a timely manner. In the physical impact part, the estimate for our property acquisition is 5,151,769 dollars. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. We ask for your approval.
Any questions for Ms. Trelson?
I was just looking at that.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Trelson. All right, we have the contract for ADA upgrades at Sportscom.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm here for the approval, to ask your approval for the contract in the amount of 359,000 dollars with Rock City Construction for an ADA upgrade for the front entryway at Sportscom, which includes a new ADA ramp walkway, additional handicap parking spaces, new sidewalks and ramps in the parking areas around Miracle Field. This also includes removal of some non-compliant and existing, uh, entryway, uh, concrete and ramps and sidewalks that need to be upgraded for ADA, uh, compliance. Does mayor, member of the council have any questions for me at this time?
I got a question for you, just, uh, I, I was looking in here for it, but I couldn't find it, I'm sorry, but, um, we bid this out?
Yes, sir.
Do we get, how many bids do we get?
I think there was.
Several. I mean, we got more than one?
I think there was two, two bids on this project.
All right, um, I guess I'm just gonna ask you very simply, I mean, is it a, is it a reasonable amount? Again, I don't know this stuff very much. It seemed way high for me for building sidewalks and ramps.
I think it's in line for what, uh, the upgrades that need to be done to the front entrance of the Sportscom.
Okay, got you.
There's a lot of demolition that has to be done here.
I got you. I'm good with it. I'm good with the project, I just.
No, it's fine. I, I think that's, the majority of the work is gonna be the, the demolition.
Okay.
Uh, replacement of the front entrance at the Sportscom. I, I think the numbers are fairly in line with what we would see in today's market.
All right, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Elliott, thank you for your hard work. All right, we'll move to purchase of Peritech Equipment Fire and Rescue. Chief Tooms.
Leading mayor and council and city staff, MFD, is charged with purchase of Peritech equipment totaling 110,025 dollars for various apparatus. This equipment consists of airbags, anchors, bracket systems, et cetera, used in vehicles wrecked, structural collapse and confirmed states rescued. MFD requests approval to purchase this equipment through the HGAC agreement of NAVCO. State law and city code permits purchase without cor, uh, competitive bids through corporate purchasing agreement. Uh, the expense, 110,025, we funded in the fiscal year 21 CIP budget. Got any questions, I'll try to answer.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Also, mayor, uh.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Matthew's gonna be a little bit disappointed, his guy coming third. He got drafted third in the big draft.
Say it one more time.
Drafted third. He got.
Did he really?
Man, we got a bunch of jokers in our staff. Y'all do realize we're voting for y'all's funding up here, right? All right, thank you. All right, we, um, we now move to purchase liability property vehicle cybercrime and workers compensation insurance coverage for the city.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. I come before you, uh, requesting approval for the purchase of, uh, liability property vehicle cybercrime and workers compensation coverage for fiscal year, uh, 2023. These, all of the coverages are materially the same as the expiring coverages and they are with the same carriers. We, uh, work closely with, uh, our broker, um, Arthur J. Gallagher, um, in connection with securing the property cyber and crime coverage and, um, co-team leader Quay Stallworth is here. If you have any questions, I'd like to publicly thank Quay for, for helping us. He's sitting in the back left corner over there. Um, and the coverage for liability and workers comp is, uh, with public entity partners. We work with public entity partners for, um, probably about five or six years now for various forms of insurance coverage. Uh, and Kelly Westerfield and Anthony Roman are here in the second row. If you have any questions about their coverage, again, they've been extremely helpful. There is, as you'll see in the, the, um, council communication, um, some lines of coverage, the premiums went up significantly, but those were, uh, almost entirely offset by decreases in three other lines of coverage, um, uh, for general liability, the errors and admissions, and, uh, most notably, workers compensation. Uh, the workers compensation, uh, premiums went down by over 10% over the previous year, and I think a lot of that credit goes to, uh, the city safety director and department heads in terms of implementing, um, uh, safer workplace practices. So overall, the, um, total premiums, um, increase for the entire, uh, risk management program, um, are only increasing by 0.8%. That's a total of 14,236 dollars. Requesting your approval of, um, all of these coverages and authorizing the mayor to, to, uh, sign the, uh, binder contracts to this, to secure this coverage.
Move for approval. Hey, I, I, yes, second.
Motion to second.
I'm gonna make a comment though.
I'll roll.
After we.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I just made a quick comment, by the way, this, this kind of brings up to me, looking at the increases we've gotten, the cyber, the cyber side of this is, some of the stuff we're talking about with multi-factor authentication and all that, which we have just never done here and I've always been surprised, so I'm gonna give a little bit of shout out to whoever's driving that, if that's Matt Jarrett or you, you guys, whatever. That's all good stuff. It's stuff we definitely should have been doing six, eight years ago and I'm glad we're doing now.
That, that, um, that was actually driven, I mean, it was, is obviously something that we needed to do, but we also would be seeing a much larger in, premium increase if we were not implementing it right now.
I assumed.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
All right, we have, uh, the, uh, acquisition of 42 acres from the American Battlefield Trust. This is from Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, I'm standing in for Nate tonight and you might notice that my hair is on the top of my head and not on my face, but other than that, we're, we're pretty much the same. We have the opportunity tonight to acquire 42 acres for about $100,000. We think that's a good transaction. This, and if, uh, there, they brought it up, okay, we're, this is the old GE plant property. 42 acres that the, the GE built motors on for years and years. O'Reilly Auto Parts bought it, uh, at, uh, for a project that didn't come to pass, uh, and O'Reilly then sold the property, uh, for the amount they paid for it to the American Battlefield Trust, uh, for $4 million. O'Reilly approached us about managing the property for them, approached the city about managing the property, and after some discussions, it was concluded that we'd be, it'd be, we'd all be better served that the city just owned the property. So Battlefield Trust is selling us the property for an amount equal to the taxes, city and county taxes that they paid during 2021 and will pay, uh, this year up to the proration point. That'll be around $100,000. We're asking approval to, for up to $125,000 in case the closing gets delayed a little bit and the, the prorated taxes for this year go up. Uh, the property is subject to two significant restrictions. There is a, uh, environmental restriction that was placed on it due to the, uh, GTE, uh, work over the years. So there's a notice of land restriction that's, uh, under the Tennessee Hazardous Waste Management Act on the property. Also, before they sold the property, O'Reilly, uh, with, gave to TDEC a, a conservation deed and that deed and easement makes the property usable only for open space, some limited, uh, farming uses, uh, walking trails, things of that nature. It's a practical matter, nothing, uh, other than perhaps a shade pavilion can be, uh, built on the property. Uh, and that's fine for what the city expects to use this for. This 42 acres is located right in the middle of substantial battlefield property. The battlefield owns all of this property up here and of course, the main battlefield is over here. So we anticipate working with the battlefield to design some trails, uh, and to help connect these two, uh, existing battlefield portions. Uh, there's, so that's the kind of use that the property, that property will be put to. 42 acres of open space for around $100,000 seems like a very good deal and we ask your approval. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
I'm gonna make the motion that we approve it, but not on any guarantee that it's gonna all be park space forever and ever, just, but I'm gonna prove that we buy it.
Okay.
I want to make it clear that there.
Well, any use of any part of it other than park space would require
Okay.
a significant, uh, effort, not necessarily impossible to get, but we would have to get waivers, uh.
I'm just saying, no guarantees.
From both, both TDEC and the, uh, uh, the National, the, the Park Service, so.
Don't bring it up.
Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely?[1775.33] Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely? No.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rives. All right, we have a second amendment to vehicle contract.
Mayor, if I could just say thanks to Ms. Rives for his work and helping us make this happen. It's been a long process, and he was integral for that, so thank you, David. Mayor, this is for a change in the previously approved contract with Ford of Murfreesboro. We're wanting to change that to Wilson County Chevrolet to purchase a three-quarter ton truck and a 15-passenger van. This is strictly due to inventory issues. We wouldn't be able to get these vehicles from Ford for over a year. There's no increase to this, there's a decrease in, of the total contract of $1,845. So we're asking that we change this contract to Wilson County Chevrolet. Glad to answer any questions you have.
I think it's great we're getting Chevys cheaper than Fords, that's fantastic. I'm moved.
Second, motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have the contract for Miracle Field playing surface renovation. Mr. Laird.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The Miracle Field of Murfreesboro celebrated six years of existence this spring. Over that period, we've hosted over 10 leagues, serving hundreds of families of youth and adults with intellectual and physical disabilities. Not only has the park provided for that special needs population, but it's also become part of our local high school and student athletes coming out to volunteer and made a connection in making our community more inclusive. However, over that period of time, the field itself is starting to show signs of wear, and we would like to revitalize it, have it professionally cleaned, and also have it roll coat it, which should revitalize the color and also extend the life. We have a contract in front of you with Surface America for $26,000 to clean and roll coat the Miracle Field. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Motion second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you now have the contract for installation of synthetic playground grass at Miracle Field.
As you know, anyone driving by the Miracle Field notices that the playground at Miracle Field is our most popular play features throughout the city, gets more serviced than any other park we have. The playing, the playground surface that's currently there has a five-year warranty, we're at the end of its lifespan. Typically, we'll get two to five more years out of a playing surface on a typical playground, but this one with the extended wear, just, it really eats that up. So we're looking, we're looking at something, one, with a longer warranty, and also durability, and the Forever Lawn Playground Grass is what's recommended through the Miracle League itself, as well as the landscape structures the playground manufactures. So before you is a contract to go over the surfacing and install playground grass from Forever Lawn, which is a 10-year warranty.
What's the timeframe on doing that?
They're scheduled to, we'll be able to finish that up in early August. Our hope is to get all this done before September 16th, when we're hosting the All-Star event.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laird. All right, we'll move to the purchase of a public safety camera system. Ms. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We bring before you tonight a request to approve our entering into a purchase contract with Convergent Technologies for a public safety camera system. The system will be deployed into areas which have been identified by staff as areas of increased criminal activity. The initial deployment will be 12 cameras with an additional five to be determined at a later date. The system will have a highly, will be highly visible units for crime deterrence. The system will be used internally to assist in crime solvability for our investigators and our crime data analysts. The cost for this system is $569,087, be funded from the DA 21 grant. The purchase is from the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. We ask for your approval to proceed with the purchase agreement for the camera system. Chief Bowen and Ms. Smith are available for any questions you might have.
Can you give an example of one particular place you're going to put it in, the circumference of a space that it's going to cover? Is it, so you rolled in on a particular space, or is it going to be a wide area?
These are more wide areas. They're not, they're not, they're mainly to cover areas of ingress, egress, in the areas that we've identified as being the higher crime areas. Primarily, the use would be, in my opinion, would be for where we've had shots fired, violent crime, that this would be a tool for the investigators to be able to go back at that point in time and see what activity had happened during that period.
Will we have someone monitoring them, or just when something happens, an alarm will go off or something?
Currently, initially, they would be not monitored, but we would have the ability to go back and see what happened in the events of a crime in that area.
Thank you.
What other municipalities have used these?
Well, pretty much all the large cities in Tennessee. Memphis has over 1,000 cameras in place. Nashville has a significant number. We're modeling hours after Chattanooga. Chattanooga currently has between 50 to 70. I know they've got 50 running, and they've got more in place. The same company that did Chattanooga is who we're contracting with.
Can you, do you guys have any, and I'm a little bit wondering whether or not we ought to have this with everybody here, too. It just sort of seems like one of those things, a pretty big step, I think, but I'm all right. But do you guys have any statistics, like, as far as what impact they had either on arrests made or reduction in crime? I mean, do we have any statistics like that, that we can see that shows where these things, how they work?
We don't have any of those numbers with us, but what we've determined is in solvability factors, that there was impact in that. I know that Ashley, as part of the real-time crime center that we're proposing, that's something that we're going to track. And of course, these cameras will be movable based on the numbers that we're seeing. I can tell you that the original placement for these cameras is based on violent crime stats that we're seeing. We did have two neighborhood meetings, because there's a couple of areas where they're pretty, there's going to be a large presence of these cameras in those areas, and we did have a neighborhood meeting, invited residents come, expressed any concerns or ask any questions they may have. And we didn't really get any opposition. I think there was one or two privacy concerns about the placement of the cameras, and we tried to explain that the best we could. But I know that our goal is from this point on is to start tracking, looking at the impact that it has on crimes, looking at how it helps with solvability factors, and of course, like I said, this is a flexible system that we can move. I know Chattanooga has expressed success with their particular system, and I know that we're going to take another trip there in July, our staff, and kind of fine-tune some of the things. But this is, this is one of the first components that we'll put in place for that real-time crime center.
So are these cameras, are they, are they just cameras? Are they, they got recognition, do they have?
They are cameras that will be identifiable as, identifiable as law enforcement cameras. They won't be covert, they will be obvious.
But I mean, are they, I mean, like facial recognition, do they have that kind of stuff?
No. What you'll have is just a real-time recording, and, you know, we'll store that for a limited time, and then if we don't have, whatever that parameter is, whether it be 30 days, 60 days, we'll just, unless there's some type of evidentiary requirement for us to keep it, that footage will be, it won't be kept any longer than that.
Let's say, I'm sorry, what you say? Let's say, for instance, I broke into a car, and the camera was on. If these cameras are not going to show my face, how, what's the significance of?
They will show your face, but there's certain software systems out there where you can use facial recognition and use it to identify people, running it through internet, and we won't be using any of that technology on this. We will get just photographic-type images, movie-type images, is what you'd be getting, but it's not facial, true facial recognition software.
That's what I was asking about, because there's some software, you know, you walk in a, you walk in a door, and it can tell you Rick LaLance just walked at the door.
Right.
To an office, you know, just because it scanned me, and it knew, you know, from my mugshot.
Mm-hmm.
It's all, but I mean, they still.
Right, right, and you know, you can.
So.
Just kidding, Scott.
If it.
Scott's playing candy.
If it caught someone, actually breaking in someone's house, and you said you ought to go back and look at the camera, so what I'm saying is, while, if I'm robbing, you know, breaking into a car, someone's breaking into someone's house, it's no immediate, you go back later and look at the camera, it's nothing immediately, saying like, like I have this little device where I can push it, help me, I'm falling, I forgot the name of it, you know, that little commercial.
I just get.
Life Alert.
Right.
I mean, right, I mean, if I hit that thing, if I hit it now, they're going to be asking, you know, what's wrong, and we'll be there. It automatically gives the location, and someone is dispersed. So it could be a day or two after this particular incident before we can start even working on it, right? Even with the cameras?
No, no. So last budget year, we did add staffing to the department in anticipation of this project, and there will be times where we have staff members in place. We have a, we're, we just furnished a area in the building where we will have our analysts in there, and there will be times where people will have immediate access to those buildings. So our big challenge right now is a lot of times we have a crime reported, we have to access other people's ring doorbell type of systems, or we have to go to a business. This would give us the opportunity to retrieve that information quickly, and if it's a serious enough crime, it's something that we can have people come in and retrieve that information pretty quickly. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it'd actually be an easier access, because one of the challenges we have, too, is going to places where systems are different, and we have to, you know, adapt to whatever system a business might have in place. So it'll make accessibility a lot easier for us.
So what are we saying, we want to defer until we have a complete council? Is that what we're saying?
I'm okay with it, I just, I just feel like it's, you know, maybe pretty big. I, I would personally prefer, I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate for us to maybe try to see some statistics from some of the, you know, let's just look at Chattanooga for, you know, for, for instance, to see, you know, sort of what kind of data they've got that they can kind of show us, and, you know, everybody, I think this is coming, it's good. You know, I mean, you see this stuff, it's critical to, you know, y'all need as much evidence as you can gather when violent crimes happen, you know, I mean, and this is one of those things that is definitely going to help that. I'm not, definitely not arguing that at all, but it's also, you know, I think kind of part of the worry is, frankly, I mean, I want somebody, if, you know, if somebody gets murdered in the street, I'm glad that we can come back and get somebody's staff to look at it pretty quickly, not two days later, right? I mean, that, okay, hey, look, the car, the car that shot is a, you know, silver Toyota Tundra pickup truck, you know, and that's, that's how, that's what they left it, so they know what to look for, okay? So I'm, I'm glad about that. You know, there's definitely a part of me, deep down, or not, that's kind of like, you know, I don't want somebody sitting there looking at all these cameras all day long, you know, just seeing what's going on in the neighborhood, or in my neighborhood, or anybody else's neighborhood, just sitting there just looking for something to look for, you know? I mean, I think the idea is, if there's a call that comes in, then we know, well, it was in an area where some of our cameras might be able to help, and then we go to look. Is that correct?
Right.
That's exactly the Chattanooga model. That is, that is how they run the system. Their calls come in, they look at the cat calls the next morning, and then they're pulling video for those particular instances to see if there's anything in there. I will say that into the award you gave tonight for the young man, the camera system at MTSU was greatly helpful in that instance as well. There was quite a bit of video that we were able to use to, for that.
How many cameras, I think y'all told me this, how many cameras are on the MTSU's campus?
We just met with them this past week. Oh, my gosh, I want to think they've got around 30 on their campus right now.
How many are we purchasing?
Seventeen.
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 And is it, is it a permanent purchase? Is this a lease kind of a thing? I'm sorry, I just.
These would be ours.
They'd be ours. Do we have a, what kind of warranty y'all, do we have?
Everything, everything has a standard one-year, 12-month warranty. The company is out of Nashville, we're not going to do a long-term agreement with them, we're just going to do a break fix with them. They're very reliable.
One more question, I'm sorry. What's the DA 21 grant?
It's the direct allocation grant that we got from the state a couple of years ago, and so we've had these funds allocated for, I think, two budgets now. And, you know, police has been going through the process of finding the right vendor since then.
Said one more question, so I'm going to ask.
Once, if we approve of this, once it's approved, what's the timeline of getting them installed and up and running?
They are ready for immediate deployment. They've already, the equipment is already in Nashville. It's something that they stock because they do service Chattanooga.
Okay.
So it really, it would be a matter of their contractor that has to set the pokes and put them in place.
I'm going to make a motion we defer it till next week.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to, thanks, gentlemen. We'll move to LG, LJA Engineering Task Order, Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehabilitation Water Resources.
Mayor, councilman, thank you for the opportunity tonight. Always good to go last, right? So in, real quick, a little history. Hobus Pipe, so fiber reinforced plastic pipe, we had two major failures in 2019. We had to replace 340 feet for almost a million dollars. So that prompted us to go in and look at everything that was greater than 15 feet in depth. So we, if you remember, we did, it was a CCTV, sonar, and a LiDAR inspection of about four, almost 41,000 linear feet. So we came together, and we found out that we established a prioritization, and we came up with about almost 3,400 feet that we did find some structural defects. The ovality in about 60, almost 6,700, greater than 7%. The trick there is, is that when you get to a certain ovality, I think, greater than 8 or 9%, then you cannot replace the pipe using a cured-in-place piping liner. You would actually have to dig it up. And then we saw where the difference in changes between 2019 and 2021, if we saw a 2% increase in ovality. Bottom line is that we got, we've got about 8,222 linear feet of very large diameter pipe that we're recommending curing in place, or putting a new pipe inside of the old pipe. It's about a $9.3 million project. Emergency repair costs, though, were about $2,700 to $3,100 per foot. The CIPP for these large interceptors is around $1,100 a foot. Again, it's not an open cut, doesn't require trenching. This would be basically putting a pipe that could withhold, withstand the weight of the overburden above it inside the existing pipe. So they're asking for a engineering task order in the amount of $392,500. That's roughly 4.2% of the construction cost. It's relatively inexpensive compared to the overall cost, so we would recommend approving that task order for that amount with LJA.
Any questions for Mr. Core?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to professional services contract with ADS LLC.
Thank you. One other point of that previous project, we are applying for some American Rescue Plan funds for that, for that project. So hopefully, we'll get some money for that. The next item, the ADS Professional Services, this is our ongoing.
The, the next item, the ADS Professional Services, this is our ongoing contract with flow monitoring for our permanent and temporary flow monitoring data for our sanitary sewer systems. It's 19 permanent flow monitors, and we have seven rain gauges. This is what we use in order to be able to do our sewer assessment report each year. We have $300,000 budgeted for FY '23, and the contract is renewable for two, year two and three, given CPI, Southern region adjustments. So we would request your approval for this professional services contract.
If there are no questions, I'm move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any, well, we do have some beer permits.
We have two regular permits for ownership change for a restaurant at 1720 Old Fort Parkway, number C170, and an ownership and name change for a grocery/market at 1607 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and a special event permit for Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce on July 12th. All applicants have met requirements for the permits, and with the exception of pending building and codes inspections for regular permits.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have appointments to the Airport Commission and the Cable Television Commission.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff?
No, only that we will be meeting next Thursday.
Sounds like we gotta have another long one. All right, any other business from council?
I've got one small thing, Mayor. This is just a personal thing. My son recently accepted a position at the Biltmore Winery, so he will be running the lab at the Biltmoors. If you guys should go to the Biltmore, you should buy wine. So he's moving to Asheville July 10th. So congratulations to Brayley.
Congratulations.
I got some other business, too.
Great.
Congrats. Thanks.
That's awesome, man. Congrats, Ron.
Just to follow up on one of the other earlier points of business with the, the road building and the MED stuff, I think we need to make sure we sort of figure out our timing on this, because, you know, we've got another project, an economic development project that that would impact. We got the project that we saw tonight, I mean, that have pretty substantial implications on whether or not we go seven lanes or not, or how soon, and where we get the money to do so. I mean, how that all shakes out matters to how my vote is on those projects, I mean, frankly. And so somehow, we got to get, I mean, I was under the impression that we're already, balls already rolling on the four things that we've already given the nod to. If we need to revisit that, let's revisit it. If that needs to be next week, obviously, we'd get Kurt, or Councilman Wade and Councilman Shacklet here, but we got to get that timing figured out on which chicken and the egg on that.
I mean, I think we, unless y'all tell me if I'm wrong, but I think on our workshop where we talked about MED funds, the transportation dollars were to be able to be used to leverage T-DOT projects.
Except the bridge.
Except the bridges. I think that's what, what we agree.
Yeah.
In my, I mean.
So.
So anything Medical Center Parkway, as we talk, or other road projects are exclusive of that. We, we said bridges, and then using those funds to go to T-DOT to be able to say, we've got this bucket of funds. Will you match that, and how much will you match that? That's, I think that's pretty clear what we said.
Well, yeah, it wa, it wa, and, and neither Kristin or I were able to finish what we were asked, and so what I was explaining is that part of our process was to, the money that, for MED, to make sure that that gets integrated to our CIP funding, because we put out the entire list on there for five years, and it needs to be on that list, so it, it needs to be on that. And then, along with that discussion, we can discuss the funding mechanisms for MED projects, but the engineering part of it is something that, because we're building roads all the time, we are talking to engineers all the time, and it's making sure that they get lined up, and who gets lined up, and when they can do it. There's no contracts yet, but there is discussions that, that need to be ongoing to make sure that they have the capacity when we need it to be lined up. So that's, that was what we were conveying at the time.
I'm comfortable with that, and, and, but what I'm saying is, we need to kind of know where we stand on the road. I mean, kind of the questions they ask, and all of a sudden, that's a seven-lane road, kind of the inference is that that's a seven-lane road, and we just haven't really gone there yet, that I know of. My point is, two, two things, and really, my, my reason for bringing this up in other businesses, twofold. One is it relates to the, the projects that we have coming, but two is, whatever we need to do as a council to get Mr. Kerr and Mr. Griffith's team, I mean, I'm expecting the engineering's already starting on the projects that we laid out three months ago, and I think the answer is that that is not happening yet. So I'm just kind of saying, whatever needs to happen to start that, I'd like to see that started, too, if the council agrees.
One of those is brought up in planning a few weeks back on the MFC project.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so it has been started, but, you have to understand, too, the money hasn't been released yet, so it's hard to sign up and put an engineer to completely, to work until we get, and, and we are, and next week, we'll have the community trust funds on there, and so we can start in that process, but we have done, done work on that. It's not, it's not, it may not be as linear.
Released. I mean, the, the money that's going towards the road isn't going to the trust, right? I mean, so it's actually in a spot where it can be leveraged.
It's in a pool, and some of it.
You know, we.
It's in general fund.
It's going to take five years to get it, but we've already got the first two or three there.
We got to vote on those projects. We got to vote on any contracts that come to us. We have to, we got to vote on those.
We're never going to get to a vote if we don't get the engineering. I mean, what I'm saying is, if we got engineering started on Medical Center Parkway, and we don't have engineering started on Last Gases Pike, 231 North, the Rutherford Boulevard Extension, and Old Fort Parkway, and look, if we all sit around and decide we want to not widen Old Fort Parkway, and we want to do Medical Center Parkway, well, that's what we do. We don't get, you know, we don't, won't get the state money for that, and if that's what the council decides, that's what the council decides. That's why I'm saying, if we need to talk about it, we'll talk about it, but, or else we said this with a fore, and I just want to get it moving, get it started, the process.
We said, after much deliberation, where we wanted those road funds to go.
I'm in. I just want it started.
And I, I think the whole.
They're state highways, so we have to work with the state on going through the process. So the starting of, of a project isn't us necessarily hiring an engineering, it's making sure we're getting lined up on a state highway. So we are working on these projects. It's as quickly as we possibly can.
If we haven't talked to T-DOT about those three projects yet, all I'm saying is, let's, let's start. I think that's what we're all expecting, I think.
Yeah. The only thing, I want to circle back to Medical Center Parkway. Medical Center Parkway was designed for three lanes on each side, and the developers who are developing out there on all the projects that are approved through Planning Commission on site plan are building that third lane right now, correct? Yeah, so.
I agree, we need it.
Yeah. No, no, I'm just saying that the third lane, I don't think should come as a surprise, because it's being built out there right now. It's just, we're basically, I think, as a city, going to have to say, we're going to have to build it everywhere now, and, and the majority of that's going to be from Thompson Lane to Broad Street, because, back to Broad, because we don't have typically a lot of third lanes on Thompson Lane, because there's just not been, from Gateway back to Broad, there's just not been a lot of development except for governmental development. So I, I think everybody's on the same page, unless I'm missing something. We all, and every, we need to build roads quicker, faster. As a matter of fact, if y'all come up with some kind of thing, you can sprinkle out there, and we'll water it.
Chia, chia roads.
Yeah. All right. There's no other business. We'll stay in the jury.